All right, it's 6:30, a point of time for our meeting. Please rise and join us in a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Do you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time of year, this season, God, when we celebrate the birth of your son. Lord, I thank you for the many blessings that you give us. I pray that you would watch over our city, those that are volunteering here this evening, watch over and protect them families. God, thank you for the many blessings you give us, and I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call a roll, please.
Paul Kaiser.
Here.
David Hunt.
Here.
Jim Lamb.
Here.
Jack Young.
Here.
Josh McNeil.
Curtis Sigler.
Here.
John Conroy.
Here.
Ken Demetrio.
Here.
Greg Easton.
Here.
All right, first item is review of the minutes from last meeting. Anyone look to them and see any need for any corrections or additions? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Call a roll, please.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Pass.
Ken Demetrio.
Pass.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. All right, the first item is continuation of the church use on Broadway Road traffic study.
This item came before this commission on October 2nd, 2023, where you held a public hearing. They were requesting a special use permit for a church use or a place of worship to be located on Broadway Road near the Ellendale five-way intersection adjacent to the railroad within the RE Residential Estate Single Family Zoning District. At that time, the applicant presented a conceptual plan to show that the layout for the use of the property, which included a 165-space parking lot and a 15,000-square-foot building with access from Broadway Road. This board recommended that a traffic study be conducted prior to making any decision as to whether or not to provide a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the special use permit. Since then, the applicant has changed the conceptual site plan to reduce the number of parking spaces from 165 spaces to 52 parking spaces. The maximum building size at build-out will be 15,000 square feet, but it will be built in three phases of 5,000 square feet. The build-out of the parking lot will coincide with the phases as well, with up to 52 parking spaces. The traffic study that was conducted was based on the existing conditions. The initial development of a 5,000-square-foot building was up to 25 trip generations, and then at build-out at 15,000 square feet with a maximum of 52 trip generations. And the conclusion was that there was no problematic impact to traffic based on this study. Surrounding uses include a post office, a behavioral treatment center, a plumbing shop, a market, a daycare, and RS12 single-family zoning. Staff has reviewed the application and the traffic study, and based on the traffic study, we recommend a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with the conditions in this staff report. Thank you.
Questions for Director Taylor?
I have a question. The traffic study just says March. Do we know what week that that was done? Because obviously if the school was in session, it would have made a difference in the traffic.
Um...
Because they do have spring break that week.
She will be able to answer that.
The study, here, I'm going to...
Was that done through spring break?
Yeah. I don't know, could have been. Could have been.
Couldn't have been spring.
It just says a week in March. It doesn't say which week.
Yeah, it does say which week it is in the actual traffic study. It says like March 15th. I think it's the 15th through the whatever that ends in. I don't have the full... So maybe it ends in the 15th. It is in the traffic study.
The study wasn't conducted during spring break where traffic would be reduced a bunch?
No.
Okay.
I mean, the purpose of the traffic study is to get an accurate depiction of the traffic, so that wouldn't...
Maybe the applicant's representative can answer that specific question.
All right, other questions for Director Taylor?
Director Taylor, if for some reason they come back or they want to increase the 52 parking spaces that they're proposing now, would that have to come back to the planning department?
I believe engineering recommended that another traffic study would need to be performed at that time. Also, if any of the ancillary uses for the church changes, that may require an amended special use permit to come before this board and the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Would that need to be in a motion, or would that happen automatically?
It's in the conditions.
It is, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I missed, sorry.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
On the traffic again. Do you have any idea if it was taken into account? And my question is coming from the meeting in March. We had a lot of people comment about traffic. Frankly surprised me. They were talking a lot about the cars circumventing and going through their neighborhoods. That was seemed to be a big issue to the public. So my question would be, can you in a study like that take that type of traffic issue into account, or is it just on your main arteries?
That traffic is already happening. That's not related to future use. So these study how people going down the main streets, but the traffic that's already happening with the people cutting through the neighborhoods, that's... You don't study that change.
But if you increase that traffic, then there's going to be more people cutting through the neighborhood, wouldn't you agree?
This is taking into account the people that are cutting through the neighborhood now. I mean, not cutting through the neighborhood, the people that are going through the main intersection now with an increase for the growth, 2% increase, and all of the traffic that the mosque generates also going through that intersection. So any other traffic would be traffic that's already cutting through the neighborhood or that, the 2% increase on that. I mean, you can't really...
Well, and then conversely, the last study that's done many years ago rated that intersection as a, I'll use the word, my word, disaster, and now all of a sudden it's great.
It doesn't say that it's great. It says that the mosque isn't going to make it worse.
Okay. Like I said, my word. It seems strange.
Other questions for Director Taylor? And I'm a little shy on this. The entrance has been moved, is that correct?
Yeah.
According to the way I read it this morning? No.
No.
It's at the same spot.
Yes. Single entrance, reduced parking lot, same-size building.
Okay. No acceleration or deceleration in line, lane going into it or out of it? It's just like a regular street just coming into, or a regular driveway coming into it, even though there's going to be more cars there?
I believe engineering's recommendations may require some improvement there along the front.
It would include widening that portion of Broadway that fronts their property.
To make it a three-lane or whatever, like some areas?
Or like a decelerated lane, a shoulder to pull over on, right? Like, so those people aren't stopping in that lane necessarily.
Because if they're turning from Broadway from the north, they're going to back up traffic there, correct? If they don't have a turn, whatever you all call it, I forget. I call it a acceleration/deceleration lanes, but anyway.
Decelerated lane, correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Is that in, is that something that would need to be done irregardless of what we're talking about?
What do you mean?
Well, the change a little bit in Broadway, the access?
Well, we generally ask developers whenever they are doing a subdivision or a special use permit to widen the road.
Put that in.
That's just like kind of standard.
Got it.
Other questions for Director Taylor? This is strictly for, I'm sorry, this is strictly for this property right now. There's not the building or anything like that. Is that correct? Kim?
It's for the development of the property.
The development of the property, right.
With this particular development, this is what needs to be done.
Okay. There'll be plans later on showing, because we're talking a 15,000-square-foot?
Maximum, but he's going to start in three phases with 5,000-square-foot increments.
Okay. And are, we will require sprinkling at that time because it, or is it because it's 5,000 increments, we don't have to sprinkle that?
Right. You know, the building code and the fire code occupancy assembly, I believe, is what would trigger that requirement. You know, down the road, they will be back with site plans for you to review and approve, and at that time, the fire marshal and codes will then look at those plans in detail.
Thank you. Anyone else for Director Taylor? All right, thank you. Will the applicant come forward, please?
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North. Happy to answer any questions you have. Dr. Lipinski is here. He authored the traffic study, so if you've got questions on the traffic, I'm going to refer to him on those, but try to answer any of the questions.
All right, before that, are you in agreement with the conditions?
Yes, yes, sir, we are.
All right.
I've got a question. When this was brought before us back last year, the same-size building required 150-something parking spaces. Now, all of a sudden, you're going to build the same-size building, and you only need a third of the parking. I don't understand how, is the population that much smaller all of a sudden?
That was a mistake on my part on one of the initial conversations that we'd had with the applicant about what they wanted and what they desired on the site. We're well within the parking requirements for the city at this size.
That's not my concern. My concern's the traffic that is going to be generated for what was originally spaced, I mean, what was originally told us to be 150 spaces. And when we turned it down because we said it couldn't handle that, all of a sudden, we had less spaces. That seems, I mean, I may have been a mistake, but it was...
That was a mistake on my part on something that they had said about what they needed on the site, and I added more parking spaces than they needed on that site.
Well, I can tell you, I am absolutely opposed to any kind of facility, whether it be a mosque, a church, a community center, anything on that part of Broadway where there's nothing but homes and there's a traffic problem already. You can do all the studies you want, but I drive through there a lot, and it doesn't matter to me about a study. I actually lived through it, so that's just what I've got to say.
Following along behind that, could you have made the assumption that you're talking about building 15,000 square feet, therefore the 160 parking spaces made sense?
No, it was a misunderstanding on my part for what they wanted on the parking, so I...
Why didn't that come out in the meeting? Why didn't that come out in the meeting? You two were sitting together. Why wasn't it corrected then?
I believe we made that point at the last meeting.
Yes, it's in the minutes.
Got it. I apologize.
No, no.
I missed that.
It was, it was a long meeting.
Well, this situation is a little, for me, is very confusing. I'm not sure where these folks are going or where you're going and what we're trying to do. So I'm reading some of this stuff, and that particular thing was on my list to ask the question of, and you've answered that question, so thank you.
The representatives of the mosque are here as well, so if you've got questions, they'd be more than happy to come up here and answer them.
They can come up. I have a continuation question. We see a congregation supposedly of 20 people, and the initial request last time was for 15,000 square feet.
That I will...
I understand that. Whoever wants, I'm just putting it, that's part of my confusion. I don't understand what exactly is being requested or asked for, and what the plan is, if there is a specific plan.
Sir, can you repeat the question, please?
In the original, back in March? David, one minute. I'm sorry. Have your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Badrul Hussain. I am representing Bartlett Muslim Society. At this moment, I'm the president of the board.
Go ahead, David. My question was that in the last meeting, we had 15,000 square feet of space put out, put on the plan. You've said at that point that you had 20 people in your congregation.
Yeah.
So I don't know, if you have a plan, I'd really appreciate you kind of helping me understand.
So the thing is like, again, we said that it is going to be a phased approach. We will start with definitely not more than 5,000, actually a 5,000-square-feet building. And the thing is, our, the building is going to be slightly bigger than the congregation's size because the, we need some extra space just for people to be there other than just the, only the prayer hall. So that's the reason 5,000 square feet, and at this moment, what we have been in, we have a congregation that is one of the rented place of Ellendale, Egypt Central Road, and over there, that is the size currently we have. We maximum have, like, tonight, for example, in the evening, there was like less than 10 people coming for the prayer. So only time, this traffic study has that, only time we expect some extra people is during the month of Ramadan, during the evenings only. Other than that, that is typically the size. And we don't expect at the beginning to even have the Friday prayer congregation because people prefer to go to the renowned scholars giving sermons and everything, so... And this, though it is open to any Muslim, but this is going to predominantly only, currently it's just 95% or more are the congregation from one group, the group of Bangladeshis who basically settled in Bartlett, called it their home, and they are all entrepreneurs. So they're doing business in the city of Memphis and also in Bartlett, and they call it home, and that's why we needed a place where they can go and congregate, so... And for the, so far, at least three years, we have been there, and the size has not increased. It doesn't mean that we don't have families. We have about 100 families, but for regular prayers, only handful people show up, and that is the norm almost everywhere except the mosque at Stratford Road, which is slightly more populated. But again, that is our expectation, that it won't be more than 20 or people in the evening prayer or the morning prayer.
Okay, that's 20 people. Let's say you put 15,000 square feet in there tomorrow. How many people do you anticipate having to show up to be in a 15,000-square-foot building one day?
15,000 is just our vision that if it gets more popular in that area, then people, of course, are, maybe it will be a couple of stories, and like only during Ramadan or some occasion, special occasion, people will gather together, mingle, and have, share a food or something like that, then we'll need more space. Otherwise, we won't. And again, just, it is also assuming that this group of people who moved here, they will stay in Bartlett instead of moving around and going to other cities or other parts of Memphis.
Okay, let's drop back to the 5,000-square-foot building. What would you anticipate the number of people filling that up in a one-year period? Any idea? It's not a totally good question, but I'm trying to understand 20, 25, 30 people in a 5,000-square-foot building, and then 15,000. That's where I'm going.
In the Ramadan, as I said, even the 20, maybe it will double to 40, and the people, the cars may not increase, cars may double in Ramadan nights, but those cars will be filled with their spouses and children because Ramadan, we gather together during the regular prayers or something throughout the year. It's only the male, adult males who come for the prayer. You don't see the children, you don't see the ladies during any of the prayers.
Okay, so you're suggesting approximately 40 people in 5,000 square feet?
Forty people and their spouses and families, so maximum, say, in Ramadan, 25 to 30 cars, that's the maximum, only on evenings. And so some families will have four-member families, some people, some, on the average, might like a four-member family. So if they all come in certain nights, then it will be slightly more crowded, and we know, for religious reasons also, we want the ladies and the gentlemen to be separated, preferably, not, there is some distances maintained between them. That's the reason we also sometimes need more space. We usually separate the ladies and the gents area.
Are you still saying also, as part of that 15,000 square feet one day, that you have no intention, and when I say that, today is today, obviously, of not putting a school in there?
No.
You mentioned before you had no plans to put a school in there.
No, there is absolutely no plans in building a school there. We have in Bartlett, actually, is, I think it falls into Bartlett, the Blizanview School, that is the Islamic school we have, and it is, we have about, what is the student population?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred population student there, and that's a full of high school now. It started as an elementary, primary school, then became a middle school, and now it's a full-fledged high school, very high quality, producing very good scholars and everything. So we have a full, the people who want to send to the Islamic school, they have that. Otherwise, people send to the city schools and the county schools.
Okay.
And some people send to the private schools also.
Can I ask you a question? I understand you just said there were 100 families in your group?
Just a ballpark, ballpark, 100 Bangladeshi families throughout Bartlett.
And you only, you only need enough room for 30 or 40 people?
So what happens is like, for Friday prayers, that is, they go to the different mosque, established mosque, and we have had four Ramadans in this facility that we are there. Even during Ramadan, we don't get more than 30 vehicles coming in, so even during the Ramadan time. So not everybody comes to the congregation, not everybody comes to this congregation. So that is, that is our experience over the last four years.
Is that because your current space won't hold more than that, or because they're just not involved?
Most likely not involved, or they prefer to go to the bigger mosque, established mosque, with, as I said, that they like to listen to the more renowned scholars, and of course, the Memphis Islamic Center in Humphreys Road, that's a family center. That's not a mosque. It's a huge facility. People can go play basketball and soccer, and they have a full-blown auditorium and gym and everything, so if there's a family gathering, and sometimes weddings are held there, so people who wants to, wants to, either in Bartlett, people go to the Singleton Community Center, or they will go to the Memphis Islamic Center in Humphreys Road.
Okay, thank you.
Another question. Go ahead. Maybe for you, Mr. Bray. When the initial process started in, just before March in the planning session, had you already done, somebody done research about what it was going to take to make this property acceptable to work in? The lines going underneath the railroad, for example, the sewage issue, that type of stuff? Was that discussed at that time or thought about or planned on?
We had some preliminary conversations with the city about that, and those are all details that we'll work through on the construction plan phase and everything that needs to be done.
Can the...
This is, this is far from being a done deal at this point, because, you know, we don't have site plan up here yet. You know, we've got to put the pencil to it on what each of those, particularly the sewer extension under the railroad, and the widening of Broadway is going to...
Could any of these, could the railroad or MLGW, could any of these folks say that we don't want this to happen? You've made a request, would they, could they say no on it? Is that a permit situation? Is it a done deal?
The, well, the sewer extension, that's generally not an issue. It's just a matter of dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's with them as far as a utility extension across, across the railroad property.
Okay.
The, and again, the sewer issue, the road issue, all of that will come down to economics. Now, MLGNW is, is always a question. I mean, not in Bartlett right now, but in some of the other municipalities, I have a situation where they're saying they don't have service.
They're a lot of fun to work with no matter where you're at.
You what?
They're a lot of fun to work with no matter where you're at.
They can be. They can be.
So we don't even know if they can, there's not a yes-or-no situation in front of them right now?
Not a yes-or-no situation in front of them. I'm not, I don't have any reason to believe that they have an issue with service in that area. That's not one of the areas that's typically been a problem for them.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion from the commissioners? All right, hearing none. Could I get a motion, please?
I move we ordinate with a yes vote onto the Board of Mayor and Alderman. They'll have to make the final decision.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we provide a positive recommendation. Call a roll, please.
Greg Easton.
No.
Paul Kaiser.
No.
David Hunt.
No.
Jim Lamb.
No.
Ken Demetrio.
No.
Jack Young.
No.
Curtis Sigler.
No.
John Conroy.
Pass. That item fails.
So we need another motion.
Why do we need another motion?
You voted no to a favorable recommendation, so now someone, if you want to make an unfavorable recommendation, someone would need to make a motion to make an unfavorable recommendation, and then if you agreed with the unfavorable recommendation, you would need to vote yes in order for your unfavorable recommendation to move forward to the BMA.
Could I ask this, the attorney to weigh in here?
We have to. I mean, if you don't make a favorable recommendation, I think it's implicit.
You said it would go to the Alderman.
That's not what we were told before, but it's your call. We were always taught that we need a affirmative motion. So this was failed, motion fails, we need a motion to carry, even if that is a unfavorable recommendation, because this motion has failed, so we need a motion to carry to bring to the BMA.
Can we move to not approve this?
Yes, yeah, you can move to make an unfavorable.
Well, I've never used, I mean, we've either always approved or not approved, and so I'm saying that...
Well, in this case, you don't approve anyways because the BMA does, so this is just the vehicle to move it forward. Yeah, favorable or unfavorable.
Okay, I move that we have an unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay.
Second. It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, so now we'll call a roll again. Greg Easton.
Yes to that motion.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Pass.
All right. Okay.
I think that item moves forward with an unfavorable recommendation. Item number two on the agenda is a construction plan for the Walker Farms Plan Development.
Item number two on the agenda is a construction plan for the Walker Farms Plan Development. Director Taylor?
The applicant, Robert Reeves, with Land Development Solutions, representing the developer, is requesting approval for construction plans for Walker Farms Plan Development Phase Three. The development is located within, I'm sorry, is located north of Old Brownsville Road, west of Farmland Way, and is within the RS-12 Residential Single Family Zoning District. This construction plan request is for Phase Three of the development, consisting of 45 lots on 20.82 acres of land. And it includes a stormwater detention area, grading and drainage plans, erosion control plans, sanitary sewer plans, a landscape plan, signage plan, and street plans for Walker Farms Drive, Walker Farms Cove, Long Cove, and Short Drive. Access to the subdivision or plan development will be from Walker Farms Drive and Farmland Way. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as listed in the staff report.
All right, questions for Director Taylor? Nobody? All right, thank you. The applicant, come forward, please. Have your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Reeves, I'm with Land Development Solutions, 6333 Burnway, Arlington, Tennessee. We're in agreement with all the staff's conditions. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant?
There are no questions, I move we approve with recommendations from staff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, call a roll.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes. That item carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item three is a final plan for Walker Farms Plan Development.
Again, Robert Reeves, with Land Development Solutions, representing the developer, is requesting final plan approval for Walker Farms Plan Development Phase Three. This development is located north of Old Brownsville and west of Farmland Way, within the RS-12 Residential Single Family Zoning District. The original plan development was approved by Shelby County in 2004, prior to it being annexed into the city of Bartlett in 2006. The outline plan that was approved by Shelby County shows that at build-out, there will be 295 single-family units on 158 acres of land. To date, Phases One and Two have been developed, with 80 lots on Phase One and 21 lots on Phase Two. The sizes of the lots will be from 10,000 square feet up, and again, this request is for 45 lots on 20.82 acres of land. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with conditions as listed in your staff report.
Questions for the director? All right, seeing none, thank you. Applicant, come forward once again, please.
Again, we are in agreement with all staff's recommendations, conditions, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
Move we approve with the recommendations from staff.
Second.
Call a roll.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes, that item carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four is a zoning ordinance amendment for residential off-street parking. Director Taylor?
Ordinance 24-14 is an ordinance to amend the city, the city of Bartlett zoning ordinance for Section Nine, I'm sorry, Article Six, Section Nine supplementary district regulations, parking, storage, or use of major recreational equipment. Article Six, Section 10, parking and the storage of certain vehicles in residential zoning district, and Article Six, Section 12, minimum off-street parking requirements. So basically, what this does is it adds more teeth to the ordinance to help code enforcement enforce the parking rules within residential zoning districts. It will add a list of new definitions, as shown in your copy of the ordinance amendment. It will add parking locations that are prohibited, parking locations that are exceptions. It will add some detailed figures to actually show where parking is permitted and prohibited per lot. And then we will also change some of the language within the general provisions of the ordinance. Trey Arthur, our code enforcement director, is here, and he can explain the ins and outs and why we needed to make these changes. Thank you.
So the reason these changes come to you is, we've gotten a lot of complaints by citizen about the current ordinance for off-street parking. Current ordinance allows parking in areas of the front yard, behind the front elevation of the house. Front elevation of the house, if you look at that diagram, if the house is in red and the driveway there, that's the front elevation of the house. So it would allow anybody to park a trailer, RV, camper, or the like, and spelled out in the ordinance, it would allow them to park any of those vehicles in the front yard. So if you had a garage that was a, offset, set out in front of the house, it would actually allow you to park a vehicle in front of your front door, pretty much, in your front yard. And there was no, there was nothing we could do about it, because it met the definition of the ordinance. We, we could, we could cite them if they parked it any closer to the street, but we couldn't cite them if they parked it in that area adjacent to it. I think when the original ordinance was written, it didn't take into account garages that offset in front of houses. It took that houses were flat-faced and maybe had a carport in them. A lot of design, you know, that garage now sits further out in front of the house, and it might be a side-low garage, or even a front-low garage, that would have that area that would determine the front setback on the house. So then, then a vehicle could be parked in that area adjacent there where the, where the corner is. The new ordinance defines the side yard as being the area from pretty much the corner of the house to the rear yard on each side. So if you did have a front-low garage or a garage that stuck out, you'd get a little more area on the right than you do the left. So the new ordinance says that it would prohibit parking in the side yard unless you had a paved parking area and a screening by a fence, by an approved fence. So what this would do is allow somebody to park a RV, camper, boat, or the like in that side yard, but it would be screened off by a fence, and it would be on a hard surface or a parking surface. So keep you from tearing up their side yards between houses.
How would you get in and out of that, through the front yard or dragging it around all the way through the backyard?
So hopefully, you would, you would get to it from the front yard. Now, I mean, same way they're doing it now, folks are parking them on the side yard now, they're going through their front yard to do it. Now, we do have an ordinance that says you must maintain your front yard, so if you rut up your front yard to do it, you're violation of the ordinance that says you have to maintain your property areas. You could pour a driveway to that area, like the diagram there shows, that has a, what I call is a spur off that driveway to that parking area.
I was really talking about the, the side yard behind the front yard, if you will. You know what I'm talking about?
The other side.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're going to, they're going to access that, the exact way they're accessing it now, they're going to drive through the yard to get there. It's just now it requires it to be a parking pad there, so that boat, camper, et cetera, is not sitting on, on grass. It's not sitting in an area that they're not going to maintain by cutting grass or, and then it's going to be screened by fence, so.
What is that approved fence?
Yes.
Hopefully, a privacy fence, a standard like Bartlett, six-foot stockade fence.
Okay, don't we need to say that if that's what we're, I mean, saying an approved fence is not going to get that done?
Well, the language of a, of screening of an approved fence, so a site-proof fence, maybe we could do a site-proof on there. Is there, there's language that supports in some of the zoning ordinance, I think, a site-proof?
You could use a site-proof fence and then include the sectioned fences in the zoning ordinance. It's a site-proof. What's a site-proof?
Well, like a stockade fence, a six-foot wood fence.
If that's what we're talking about, why don't we call it that? I mean, I'm just curious, there could be 100 definitions of a site-proof fence. None of us up here, I don't think, understood what a site-
I mean, they could have a brick fence, you could have, nowadays, they're those PVC fences that you just can't see through.
Okay, I see.
Do you have the manpower to enforce this, if we change it?
No.
By complaint, we do.
By complaint?
Yeah, and, and that's why we, that's why we're enforcing anything now is by complaint. We do have several that-
So if all the neighbors get along and don't complain, then it doesn't matter?
He can't say that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the manpower to drive around and look for this. No, I don't have the manpower, that's why we typically go out by complaint.
If somebody doesn't have a pad, in this example we talked about, how do, how's that happen?
Hell, you-
Parking on the grass right now, I don't have my fence up, I got my 60-foot cruiser sitting back there on the grass. Who gets the program started? Because I think this affects a lot of people in town. We're not talking Mondays and Tuesdays. How do we, how do we ensure to start off with that those pads and the fences are back to going up by complaint?
Once you get the site-proof fence, how you going to know if there's a pad back there?
Yeah, you'd have to have a permit for the fence and the pad to be placed on the property.
Again, I'm sitting out there, I don't want to mess with it until somebody brings it to my attention. Someone needs to call in and complain about the-
Someone calls and complains, we'll go out and, yeah.
I have a question among the commissioners. Is anybody that are concerned that six feet is not an adequate height fence?
No.
Some of these RVs are much taller than six feet.
Well, I don't, I don't think you could hide an RV by a fence.
Yeah, we'd take probably a 12, 14-foot fence to an RV or a big boat.
I don't think that's the ditch we want to down.
Fifteen-foot-high fence would be just as offensive as a-
You got that right.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Hopefully, the people with larger RVs are parking those off-site somewhere. I know, I know we do have some that are being here. What we see typically in codes is boats, little utility trailers, jet skis, four-wheelers, things like that, that typically are smaller than a six-foot height.
We also have still, this community started a long time ago, we got, obviously, houses that are 30, 40 years old that don't have that kind of space to make that happen. They have to make it happen the best way they can, or they go find a place to store it, pretty much.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Now, this, this ordinance came from, we looked at several cities around, there's several ordinances like this in, in other locations, Germantown, Calvaryville, Franklin, has this language in their ordinance, and I think it's going to protect some property values by having that screening up and having them set behind the house.
Okay. And I'll, I'll speak from experience. I had to do what was the Bonham exhibit there. I did the little break-off, had that concrete poured and poured to the side of my house, to the back piece of my house.
Well, I think it makes sense.
So I stored my boat behind the fence, because I had two citations given to me.
Ah, somebody called in.
Somebody did.
Other questions? All right, I've got one a little bit off the main point here, but it talks about short-term residential recreation vehicles and their occupants. How long is somebody allowed to live in?
I believe that ordinance is allowed for six months on an emergency basis. So that emergency basis, that, that passed, that was added years ago. We had some residents that had like a fire at their home, and they didn't want to pull their kids out of Bartlett schools, because they were going to be put up in a hotel in Germantown or Calvaryville or something like that. So we allowed for that temporary stay, and it was six months. Now, we do go out, each one of those is, is approved, we do go out, we ask the fire marshal to go out and look at those RVs or trailers, whatever they're using for temporary basis. We do ask them to go out and recommend, you know, working fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors, things like that, to try and make them as safe as possible.
And, and a six-month permit is granted only in the case of an emergency?
Yes, needs to, needs to be an emergency. It's not just because I'm getting a remodel of the house, it's a, it's a fire, we had one lady that had a termite infestation, and they had to bomb or enclose the house, and she said they couldn't go in it for two or three weeks. She asked to stay in hers for a couple of weeks, we did that.
We had a house on Third that burned, that they put a RV in the driveway for, I can't remember how long, but we allowed, and that's what the first exception was, I believe.
For, we, I only know of two, of three, I'm sorry, since, since we started allowing that. I only know of three, and that's been in three, four years that it's been allowed.
Any other questions?
I have one, please. The word roadworthy is, is in there, what, what does that mean?
Go down the road, you won't get, I usually tell people, can you get a ticket going down the road for it? So it must be in good working condition.
If somebody said that that thing's been sitting there for six months, and I don't think it's roadworthy, who, who checks it out? Do you have the wherewithal to be able to check it? You know where I'm going with that question.
Mm-hmm.
Don't say the same thing about junk cars in our city.
Yeah, so if, if it's a licensed vehicle, aired-up tires, and can, can go down the road, I'm not going around asking folks to crank their car out and drive it down the road.
No, 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 I understand that. I just wanted, by definition, how that, how that would work. Again, somebody would need to call in probably and say, it hasn't been there, it's got a flat tire, or whatever.
So if it isn't roadworthy, it'd be a junk or abandoned vehicle at that point, if it wasn't roadworthy, or wasn't a licensed motor vehicle.
And what, what happens if that's the case? That's a good, that's a good-
It'd be cited, cited for a junk vehicle.
And then what happens?
They have to get rid of it.
I mean, the normal process, they'd have, they'd have to move it, depending on what it is, they'd have to move it, put it in an enclosed building, et cetera.
Okay, I'm good, thank you, that's good, good.
Anything else?
Food trucks and trailers involved in this?
Absolutely.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion, please?
Move we approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, call a roll.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yep.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes, that item carries. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
We do not.
In that case, we are adjourned.
Hope everyone has a Merry Christmas.